Okay, good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the Wilmington Board of Selectmen of Monday, August 15, 2016, to order. All members are present. The meeting will start officially at 7:02. At this time, I would kindly ask if we can all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the true public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the transmitting of the Treasury warrants 4, 4A, 5, 5A, 6, 6A, 7, and 7A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of May 23, 2016. Everyone has a copy of those minutes in your packet. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll move to approve the minutes as presented.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our first appointment, I do apologize to the audience here and at home for running a few minutes late. At this time, I'd like to call this appointment to order. The appointment is with William Snyder, who is the Operations Manager for Benevento Family Limited Partnership with reference to a public hearing relative to the request for a flammable license for the property located at 910 Salem Street. Mr. Snyder? Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name's William Snyder. I'm the Operations Manager for the Benevento Corporation, representing the Benevento Limited Family Partnership, which owns that parcel at 910. I'd like to request a permit for flammable storage on that site, specifically a 30,000-gallon asphalt tank. The reason I come before you for that, the state DOT has a new additive they're mandating in all asphalt construction called EvoTherm, which lets the asphalt be produced at lower temperature and also increases the life of the roads by seven years they're discovering. So right now, it's mandated by DOT, and very soon, it'll be a requirement for all the towns and cities. So we just want to be able to basically sell that material to the town. Without that tank, we won't be able to be approved to manufacture that material, so we won't be able to sell Wilmington hot top.
Okay. There's obviously a complete package that we've received here with all the pertinent information. I do understand in speaking with Town Manager Jeff Hall, as all of you may have observed, we're fortunate to have Assistant Town Manager Kendra Amaral here tonight, working on behalf of the management team, and will be presiding over giving us the recommendations. I also see that we have support here from our fire department, who has taken a lead role in working with us and making, you know, a recommendation for this. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Assistant Town Manager Amaral to go through the recommendations, and then, at that time, I will offer board members to ask any questions, and at this time, we can proceed with that. So Kendra, if you can take it away, that would be great.
Thank you. So we have two recommendations. The first is from Al Spalding, our Inspector of Buildings, who has no outstanding zoning or building code issues with this entity or on their parcel, and so he has no adverse recommendation. And we also have a recommendation from Deputy Donovan. Having reviewed the application and the location, recommends approval of the licenses presented.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Chief Donovan, thank you very much for being here tonight, and I know, just for purposes of informing the board, in speaking with Jeff, it's my understanding that you actually did a site visit to the location. Do you have any comments that you want to share with the board beyond what's in writing?
No, I have no comments. I support the license, considering the material that's going to be stored in those tanks, liquid asphalt. It's very non-volatile. The flash point is very high, 420 degrees, actually 425, so it's a Class 3B combustible, which is the lower of the classes, so I have no reservations. There's a burn that surrounds the tanks that are there now. I support approval of the license.
Thank you very much. I just felt it was important to call on you because, obviously, you know, as members of this board, we heavily rely on your expert opinion and that of your team, so I appreciate you sharing those comments. And at this time, I'll turn it over to any members of the board if you have any questions, comments, or anything that you'd like to either ask the Deputy Chief or to Mr. Snyder directly. Yes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to hear you correctly. What you're looking for tonight is a vote of the board. Did I hear you right? Did you say it extends the shelf life another seven more years on the road work?
Yeah, that's what the testing's coming up with, yes. That's why the DOT's mandating it. It's going to be a huge savings, and it also permits you to produce at a lower temperature, which has a bit of a green effect. You don't have to run it up to those high temperatures that production is mandated now.
Well, so that's great for municipalities and bad for you.
Well, it's a trade-off.
Oh, no, that's all. I just wanted to make sure I heard you right, so obviously, it's makes a lot of sense.
That's what they're saying, which seems like a fantastic number, but that's what it's coming in at.
Looks like the town and municipality's going to save a lot of money on the long stretch of it. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Bennett?
If I may, Mr. Snyder, my question, I'm looking at this map here of the property. Could you just try to give me an idea where on the property this tank might be located? I'm trying to orient myself so that closer to 62 where the residences are.
No, it's not close to 62 whatsoever. It's probably, I'm not sure how I can describe it. You know, say, the power line? Do you know where the power lines run through the site?
Okay.
There's, it's back there, maybe two-thirds of the way back prior, before Martins Brook. So it's not, it's fairly far away from any residents.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. Shepard?
Just correct me, or don't correct me, but reaffirm for me. Is this tank, it'll be a brand-new tank, correct?
That's right.
And is it asphalt or an additive that you'll be putting into?
It is asphalt with an additive. They blend it at the terminal.
I see. All right, so it's the finished product, if you will.
Well, no. Liquid asphalt is, what would be a good way to describe it, like the water of a cake mix. You put aggregates together with liquid asphalt, and that's the hot top on your road.
Okay, cool.
But they are, you request the blend at the terminal, because that has to be verified to mass DOT, so they know they're actually getting that product, and you're not just saying they're getting it.
Thank you. That answers that. One other, last question is, in our packet was a fair amount of abutters, and I'm not sure who the question is to. It might be to Deputy Chief Donovan or to Kendra, I'm not sure. There's some information about its proximity to North Reading, and there's a list of our North Reading abutters, and obviously, we're primarily concerned with how this impacts and affects Wilmington, but we want to be good neighbors, too. To what degree are you going before the North Reading Board of Selectmen as well?
No, they're, they're, how many feet, you know, the abutters is double what the towns is. So they were all notified. The only people that didn't respond was mass D camp, and one person from North Street whose kin informed me he was deceased and wondered why he was supposed to appear at the meeting. But all the abutters on the North Reading abutter list were notified, and I have their cards.
If you'd like to bring those forward, take those, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
I just have a question as well.
Yes, absolutely.
You had mentioned that the location of the cylinders are going to be near a brook.
Well, no, only in reference.
Or is the issue if there's spillage, or if there's some?
They're in full containment, and liquid asphalt doesn't flow. Its viscosity, it's more like molasses. As soon as it hits the ground, it stops, and one of the, the way you clean it up is you literally roll it up when it gets, it starts to solidify, and you roll it up like a carpet. So the, that was in reference to Mr. Bindles. Just trying to give you some reference on the site where this tank is. If this tank spilled, it stays in containment. It will not get anywhere near Martins Brook.
What is the life of the container, the cylinder?
I would, it doesn't really rust because it's basically a waterproofing interior, and the outside is coated with aluminum and insulation, so it really has no, you know, in 10 years, in 20 years, it just doesn't rust.
Okay, thank you. Anything further?
Out of curiosity, if I may, do we periodically inspect, thank you, Deputy Chief, do we periodically inspect these kind of facilities, or is there any kind of a regimen or a protocol for checking out?
We try to get out to as many businesses and places in town that we can. There are certain among the places that have to be expected, required by law, like quarterly inspected, like schools, nursing homes. As far as the businesses go, we try to get out to as many as we can, as, you know, as manpower is available to do so, you know.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, this is a public, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, no, I have no hesitation voting for it. I got to say, I'm probably closer to you as an abutter than any of the members, and I have to say, you folks have been a decent neighbor. I have to admit to that, so I just want to let you know you've been a good neighbor.
We try. We understandably, we're a large presence in town, and we're cognizant of that, and we do try to be good neighbors.
You've been here since the '30s, right?
Yeah, before my time, but I did, but yeah.
All right, good. All right, thank you, Madam Chair.
Good to know. So this is a public hearing, so at this time, I will turn it over to the audience to see if anyone has a question or comment. Seeing and hearing none. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to close the hearing, and I certainly would entertain a motion from anyone on the board to grant this license.
I would move to grant the request of the Benevento Family Limited Partnership for a flammable's license for the located, property located at 910 Salem Street.
I'll second that.
Okay, just as a procedural question, in granting the license, Kendra, and this would be a question for you, I do see that Deputy Chief Gary Donovan did put together a very extensive memo that line-listed out very specific parameters in terms of gallons and sizes and things of that nature. Would it be prudent to make sure that the license is being proposed with the specific criteria that's listed by the Deputy Chief?
I think if you approve it as presented, which includes the plans and the specifications, then you've covered all the bases.
Covered that, okay. All right, does that seem reasonable to you? Okay, thank you. So, motion's been made, and seconded any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are running a little bit behind. With Joseph Martinello, we are one Wilmington with reference to We Are One Wilmington program update and a request to conduct the 2017 run for Wilmington and also the walk for Kim Forte, and at this time, I'd like to welcome you, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'll try to get you back on schedule. That'll be my goal for this evening. So, just a quick update, I haven't visited you since our road race, so just an update for the 26th road race. We had close to 500 participants, runners and walkers. We raised over $10,000. We were able to put back 2,300 into other nonprofits. So we take a piece of the registration fee, and runners or participants can choose which nonprofit they'd like to see benefit from that. So 2,300 went back to other nonprofits and will be taken close to 50. Over the past four years, we've done that. We've been able to put back 8,000 into other nonprofits with this fundraiser. We had a great day. We increased our categories for the actual winners. We had different age categories this year. We had medals this year. We had winners for both men and women, and it was a great thing to encourage the youth as well. So we created some categories for under seven and a couple of lower age categories, which we didn't previously have. So to see the expression on the kid's face at the end of the race when they're getting a medal and they're getting their picture taken, it was, it was a great addition to the actual event that we've been hosting for the past six years. So I'm here before you tonight again to talk about next year's race, and I'm here quite early. We're usually in the fall, and we're trying to get ahead of our schedule this year and actually be able to promote the race at the September road race and at some of our activities in the fall and open registration earlier this year. So looking for permission again to host the 7th Annual Run for Wilmington Kim Forte Walk, and looking to do it the same weekend we've done it traditionally. So what we traditionally ask for is support to leverage the common and then just support to be able to host the race throughout the town that given day. And the route that we host the race is Wildwood Street to Woburn to Federal to Middlesex and then back to the common. The weekend we're looking for is April 23, looking for an 11:00 AM start. With the Abundant Life right there, we've worked with them. They said that that's a good start time. I know they've had conflict with other road races due to start times, and they were comfortable with that again this past year, so we did a follow-up with them thereafter the race. Just to put it in context, since we are talking 2017 and April of 2017, that is the Sunday following Patriots' Day, and it ends up being the end of school vacation week, just to put it in context for everybody. In addition to that, just some other things that we have upcoming, we have the Festival of Trees, which is another fundraiser that we do. That's in December. That happens December 3rd and 4th. The great thing with these funds that we're raising, they go back into the community. One of the feel-good things that I would have to say that we were able to help out this year was with Villanova Hall, to be able to donate some funds, because they finally got a new curtain. They're cleaning up the hall there, so to be able to take some of that money that we've raised and give it back into the community is great. We also help out families in town. We do acts of kindness throughout the community. One of the organizations that we support on a regular basis is AIM, and we've done 22 enrichment programs with the AIM organization. So it's another area where we're giving back, and scholarships alone, $8,500 go into high school scholarships, out to students, so we continue to take what we get and give it right back into the community.
Joe, not to interrupt you, but just to ask the question, what does the acronym AIM stand for?
Angels in Motion.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a nonprofit in Wilmington as well, for those with disabilities, and we have members from our nonprofit go and offer up programs during, I forget what day of the week, I think it's a Monday, it's Tuesday, and a couple of our members go, and we take some of the funds that we've raised through our fundraisers and help out with the activities that they're having at that nonprofit as well.
Great. Thank you. Anything further, Joe?
No, I think that's.
Not that that isn't enough, but I just didn't want to punctuate your sentence.
Yeah, we launched this summer, 1,000 Acts of Kindness. So that was a social media initiative that we made. We put out there. It was to get people to start sharing some of the things that they're doing, and it doesn't need to be monetary. So higher you bettering the community. So it's not all about the monetary. This nonprofit is definitely focused on both giving back financially, but also giving back emotionally to people.
Thank you. This time, I entertain any questions, comments, or anything from the board? Anyone have, yes?
Thank you, Joe. I appreciate you being here, and I'm in full support of this event. I've had the good fortune of participating in the past, and I just know that you and your team and all the volunteers from Wildwood do an unbelievable job. Tons of preparation, obviously, here, months in advance, and you're already thinking about it, and I know you've been planning, so this is an awesome event, and I thank you in advance for everything you and your team are doing for the community. I'm looking forward to next year again.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, just congratulations to you and the volunteers. It is, as Slupin Bindle said, a great event. He participates in it. I don't, because I don't run a walk that much, but I do sit out at Woburn Street, because you come right down my street and give out some water, but it is a, it is a great, a great day.
Thank you.
Just, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to echo my colleagues, Mr. Bindle and Mr. Kyra, you folks do an outstanding job, and it's really something worthwhile, and you guys do a great job. And I agree with Mr. Kyra. Him and I would participate, but we'd probably need a paramedic with us to take us along, so I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
I'll just be brief. I just want to say thank you for what you're doing, for all the individuals that benefit from the works that you and your team are involved in, and thank you for being an example to hosts of other folks who hopefully witness the works that you and your team do and are inspired to hopefully do something of their own. 1,000 Acts of Kindness, maybe if we could, if everyone takes two, and it really becomes viral, imagine the world we would have. So, you know, it starts somewhere, and it starts with you and your group, so thank you for all the efforts you guys do.
It has all been said, but I would certainly feel left out if I didn't express my extreme gratitude. I know that you and I talk on a regular basis, so I've told you this, you know, privately as well. It goes without saying, all the accomplishments that your organization has done and has continued to do. Some of the highlights to me that stand out is that you're an organization for all ages, and you really can bring families together in very joyous settings, and certainly do a lot behind the scenes in a very private way for families that need help, that, you know, confidentiality is paramount. I'd also just like to convey how pleased I am that you, your group has incorporated the memory of Kim Forte into this whole aspect of things. I don't think anybody can drive around Wilmington and not remember her vibrant spirit and smile as she walked around all of the streets in Wilmington, and I never had the pleasure of actually meeting her in person, but you couldn't help but not know who she was just because she represented the Walk of Wilmington. So I think that that is so fitting and appropriate, and I know it means a tremendous amount to her husband and son and her whole entire family, and I, I think it certainly bears repeating that loved ones want to know, that the community doesn't forget their special person, and it's clear that the town of Wilmington hasn't forgotten Kim, and I think that that certainly is deserving for her to be remembered tonight and every other time that this is brought up. So, thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
So having said that, I would entertain a motion to grant the request, and prior to doing that, I just want to check in with you, Kendra, just to see if there are any issues with police or town or any conflicts or any reasons that this may not be a viable, you know, situation right now to approve, but I'm sensing that there isn't an issue.
No, so this was checked through police and fire, and there are no issues. It's been a very successful event in the past, run very safely and very effectively, so there are no issues.
Okay, thank you. If there's nothing else, and then, yes?
I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, comments? Hearing none? All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. I have one other question, and I can come back for another meeting. Traditionally, for the Festival of Trees, we grant a request, and I'm not sure who we have to ask that of, to put lawn signs on the common or yard signs on the common just the weekend of the festival? Is that something that comes through this board, or does it go through the town for the common?
I would go back through Jeff very specifically. I know he has indicated to me that he would want to discuss how many signs that you would be putting out and where specifically they would be located, and I would use his office as a first line of contact, and then if he feels that it needs to come before the board, he'll bring it forward in a formal agenda.
Fantastic.
Would that be, absolutely.
Well, thank you all. Have a great evening.
You, too.
Thanks. Okay, moving on to our next discussion, which is the Board of Selectmen to discuss the Board of Appeals Associate's Members process, and what I'd like to do is just remind folks that this has been brought up at previous meetings. We did have a resident that was here last meeting, Frank West, who had asked if we could please put it on as an agenda item. As you may all recall, our Town Manager Jeff Hall did put in a very detailed memo into our packets, or actually, it was at a, I believe it was in our packets, and then also brought in his correspondence at a, at a meeting during this time on February 19 of 2016, and it was with reference to the consideration of associate members on the Board of Appeals. And I wanted to ask Kendra if I could kindly ask for you to summarize that history, and I think it's worthwhile in doing that so that we can convey to the public what that summary states, just to kind of give people a point of reference, if you don't mind.
Absolutely. So as stated, thank you, that this was a memo the Town Manager provided to the board in February of 2016, and basically gave the history of the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals was established in at least 1920, as best we can tell, with three members and associate members thereafter. At the May 3, 2008 Annual Town Meeting, a warrant article was put forward to change the Board of Appeals to a five-member board and eliminate the associate members. That was approved, not unanimously, but pretty near. It was 150 in favor, two opposed. Typically, the challenges with the associate members that had been found and probably led to, as best we can tell, this change and this request for the warrant article to go to a five-member board was issues relative to keeping associate members engaged on the ZBA. They had to attend the meetings, they had to be present for the discussions in order to participate if needed, but oftentimes, they weren't needed, so keeping that engagement when they're meeting up to two times a month was difficult to do. In addition, figuring out who filled in as the associate member, filling in for a ZBA full member, when an absence did occur or a conflict of interest did occur was problematic. Figuring out who's during it was, or if it should always be the longest-standing member, so I think a lot of those issues came into effect and were what motivated the town to go to a five-member board with no associates.
Okay. So that gives the history of it. You know, I do see that Mr. West is here. I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues first, and certainly, Mr. West, if you have any additional comments, I would certainly give you the opportunity to speak, but I'd like to turn it over to the board and just see if there's any general discussion on this, since it is on the agenda, and feel free to engage in discussion at this time.
If I may.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, so the context of this, as many probably are aware, this came to specific light in the context of the Board of Appeals voting on, and the preliminary, or the first decision that they made about the 4th of July. And so questions came up, well, we had four members voting, and it required a four-person vote, and so there was some challenge, or not challenge, but some concern about that, and I think appropriately. But the decision, I think, that we made collectively was, let's not, let's not vote in February, March to push this agenda or push this question as a reaction specifically to that 4th of July situation, but rather, in fact, it even indicates here, but rather, let's look at this from a more holistic, long-term, big-picture perspective. And that's, I'm glad that we throttled it back a little bit, and that we had the time through the summer to give this some thought, to have this research done, and to have this opportunity to have this conversation now while we're not specifically under any kind of time constraints or pressure. Because at the time, in all candor, I was thinking, yeah, this, this doesn't seem to be right. You know, it seems like maybe there is value to this idea of having associate members added to our five-member board. But I will admit to you that I was feeling maybe the angst of this 4th of July situation that was, that we were dealing with live. The absent that 4th of July thing, I feel like now I'm able to look at this from a higher view, and given the concerns that Kendra just articulated to us, and given the broader understanding of the Board of Appeals as it was up until 2008 with three members and associate members, and the concerns that there always was with interjecting those alternates or associate members in when needed, I think that the five-member board as it stands and as was voted in 2008 is serving the town well, except for some very infrequent occasions when there is a conflict. We still have the four members, and a four-member board is sufficient to listen to and render decisions. So I'm the first one here to say that I was, at one point, thinking that this idea of associate members or alternates to our existing Board of Appeals might make sense. I've retracted on that thinking as I've been able to think about it from the, from the bigger picture. So my personal feeling is, it ain't broken. I don't think we need to fix it. I guess I'll summarize with that. That's where I come down on this today, anyway.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, Frank, I served on the board back in select, year 2008, and I do support the change from the three permanent members to the five. It did make sense. So if one member decides to recuse themselves for whatever reason, or the vote would be four to five, the individual would still get an okay, a blessing from the Board of Appeals relative to their application. You know, years ago, when you had the three members and you had the alternates, you know, they'd have to be there at every single meeting, and if they was to miss a meeting, then there'd be somewhat chaos. So it made a lot of sense to do it. I did support it at the town meeting in 2008, and, you know, appreciate the comments, and I just think that what we're doing is, I think it's working fine, and I still support the five members, the permanent members on the board right now. It makes sense. Thanks.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, with the five members on the board. I, as you said, if it's not broken, don't fix it. And it's working out. You know, there was that one little issue with the carnival, and I don't think that just because there was one issue, we should change the whole process and procedure back to the way it was. So I, I like the idea of it being a five-member board, and I would support that staying in that way.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. West, do you have any questions or comments?
The only comment that I'll have is, is that, I guess a couple of things. Is that, one, has anyone looked at the, has anyone gone to the Board of Appeals and asked them for their, for their opinion, number one? And the other question is, is that, has anyone looked at the absenteeism of, on their votes? If they've always had a five-person vote, or if there's been, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that what percentage of the time or what votes have come out where not five people have voted for whatever reason? Either absence, conflict?
I couldn't quote you specifics in terms of statistics, but I would say to you that since I've been a member of this board, I've never had the previous town manager or the current town manager come to me as a sitting member of board or as the chairman to say that, that there are issues with any board or committee, specifically the Board of Appeals, to say that they have not been able to effectively conduct, conduct town business. I also have not had any Board of Appeals member approach me and indicate that the framework in which they've been on the Board of Appeals, because they've been on for years in many instances, have indicated that they feel that they can't effectively conduct the business of the town. I have not heard anything from the Building Department through Al Spalding or any members affiliated with the Building Department or any other department within Town Hall, for that matter, that have indicated that the course of Wilmington business has not been able to be effectively conducted due to the quantity and the composition of the Board of Appeals. Have I gone and actively interviewed each member of the Board of Appeals and asked probing questions to them if they, for their opinion? I have not done that. I don't know if you have anything else from the manager's office that you can share, not to spot you with that, but I'm not aware of any, any major issues. They haven't been brought to my attention.
No, we certainly haven't heard anything from the Board of Appeals in terms of having concerns about being a five-member board with no associates. They have not raised issues, nor have we really heard any issues from the community that brings matters before the ZBA. So they're the ones who really get impacted by a four-member board as opposed to a five-member. If someone is absent, has to recuse themselves, that's when they need to make strategy decisions as to whether or not to continue till there's five members present or keep going forward. And we have not received any negative feedback that I'm aware of from those going before the ZBA about the, the composition and their ability to move forward with, with applications before the ZBA in a timely manner.
Would it also be fair to say that if there's an attendance issue or for whatever the case may be, that, you know, the applicant has the right to potentially postpone their application to a follow-on meeting if there's an attendance issue? So they're not necessarily forced, per se, to have their hearing on a said date if attendance is a factor? Is that, is that a fair statement?
Absolutely. Yes, that's part of the strategy factor, that applicants determine when they get to the ZBA or are made aware of who will be present and how many will be present as to whether or not to ask for continuation until all members are present or to proceed. And they are actually advised at the time as well, that by proceeding with the hearing with a four-member board present, they need a full, they need unanimous approval.
And also, would it be fair to say that if there are some factors that are incomplete or things that don't quite necessarily make an application ready, that the Building Department at times can be helpful to indicate to an applicant that they might, may want to revisit a few things before formally bringing their application forward, because at this point it may, in fact, be denied because it doesn't meet all the criteria necessary for hearing the way it's currently being presented, such that they help the applicant be ready for the process?
Absolutely. Yes.
So those are just a few things that I've done as proactive research in coming into tonight. I did stop in the Building Inspector's Office, talked a little bit about the process. So I recognize the absentee factor, but the applicant also does have a choice to continue to avoid that absenteeism potentially being an issue. I have not been told that there's any issues with attendance in any of the meetings that I've sat in or attended, there hasn't been anybody, you know, missing. But I don't, I couldn't tell you someone's 24-year attendance history, for example.
Again, I wasn't specifically asking that.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, the things that I was looking at was, and again, I'm not basing it totally on the Fourth of July, but that did create a lot of havoc. And I believe that you may end up in a similar situation this year. It may, may not happen, who knows? You know, the Fourth of July seemed to have run very well. It seems like members of the Board of Appeals that may have taken issues seem more comfortable. So things like that may not happen. But I'm looking at general, you know, for example, a month ago, I was sitting right here, and you were looking to replace one of the members of the Board of Appeals. And I listened to the bulk of seven, there was eight applicants, there's some very qualified, some may not have been as much, but on the same token, this is that you made a decision, and in your eyes, many of you, if not all of you, said, gee, I'm wrestling with two or three different candidates here. So potentially, theoretically, if, if you chose one as the board member, and if it was, if it was set up differently, one or two could have been set up as alternate members, and maybe you guys would have been pleased with the choices on the alternate at that point. So it seems to me that there's interest, at least in becoming a full-timer. The question was never asked, and my rights shouldn't have been because it's not open, but there may have been interest from some of those people for an associate membership. The other thing I'm looking at is that there might be situations where you have somebody that comes in with the case, has an attorney paying X amount of dollars per hour, finds out that either A, there's absent members or, like I said, maybe part of their strategy is that they want to have all five members. So now, if there's one absent member, gee, you know, maybe they might, like I said, they had the opportunity to continue a case, but now they paid that attorney for two, three, four hours, you know, whatever it is. So I'm just kind of looking along in those, in those lights. So, you know, I guess one question that I had is, is where's an agenda item here? Did you guys ask the Board of Appeals their opinion? Maybe the chair, or they send any type of notification to the Board of Appeals that this was going to be an agenda item tonight?
I worked through the town manager. I did not specifically contact any Board of Appeals member myself. I don't know if any other member of this board has, but I can tell you that I have not.
I'm just curious what their opinion is. I mean, I, I talked to a couple offhand, and they didn't think it was such a bad idea. But on the same token, these were just casual conversations, not a, you know, just set, not a set-up meeting by me in any stretch of the imagination, just, hey, you know, I mentioned to the Board of Selectmen, what do you think? They said, well, it's not a bad idea. So I, again, I don't know if it was something that, you know, maybe they, they should take up in their meetings.
You know, I think it's, I have, like I said, have not contacted anyone specifically and asked them the question. I wasn't aware that there were any issues. So maybe I didn't feel that there was a need necessarily to have that type of conversation. What I would say to you is that I don't know in terms of if, if we would, you talked about a special town meeting and bringing this forward. I have concerns that this rises to the level of a special town meeting. I'm concerned about the cost that the town would incur. It's somewhere in the order between $5,000 to $7,000 for a special town meeting. I also have asked for some legal clarity, that if the Fourth of July Committee, for example, wanted to put forward an application again this year and change the scope of the application, if that would be enough for them to be able to be heard again this year? Or if just the fact that they're the same applicant coming forward for the same, and I need to get some legal clarity, and I have asked that question. So I don't know that if we were to make these changes now, that it would even help them anyway. That would be one thing. And I do recognize that the previous three-to-five-member scenario was a warrant article that was brought forward by the Board of Selectmen to make that change. And so I understand why you are asking for that. What I'm hearing, not from unanimously everyone, but from a majority of this board, is that they feel not inclined to be supportive of the change. What I would say to you is it doesn't preclude a petition article from coming forward through the own, their own process that's available to any resident to still have this come forward to the town meeting floor. It just may, at this point, doesn't appear to be something that this board, majority-wise, would want to entertain.
And I only mentioned it, I mentioned it as a special because, again, you know, that's kind of a little biased towards the Fourth of July issue. But, and again, I appreciate the fact of cost. But I think also that the way it went through, I think it did become, the carnival did become a cost to the town, correct?
You know, there are financials that will be discussed later on in this meeting. Every year the carnival has taken place, it has been a cost to the town. And I don't want to take away from the assistant town manager's messaging. This year, and I don't want to send the wrong message, because I'm, I'm very supportive of the Fourth of July Committee, and I don't want to be self-promoting personally, politically, or a member of this board, that I'm advocating for the town to stay in the carnival business. That's a separate discussion. But this year, it cost the town less than it ever has over the past several years because the town initiated the application. And the numbers will come out later on in this meeting. I will tell you at a high level, the cost to the town for running this event is anywhere from $35,000 to $50,000 over the past however many years. And correct me if I'm wrong, Kendra, on anything I'm saying. Because we actually received the revenue in from the carnival versus it going to the Fourth of July Committee, we've actually received money back as a result of having this carnival, which has taken that $35,000 to $50,000 and has actually brought it down to a cost to the town of just under $20,000. So theoretically, by the town sponsoring the carnival, it costs the town less money to have the event.
And again, without getting into it, that difference would have gone into the Fourth of July for
Correct.
... future events, tree lighting or future Fourth of July.
I would also say that we, as a town, appropriated $25,000 for this event at town meetings. So, like I said, I don't want it to be like I'm advocating for the town's position versus the Fourth of July. I would definitely say, I want to go on record as saying that the town has enjoyed an extensive cooperative relationship with the Fourth of July. The town stepped in based on resident requests to take action and try and bring the fourth back. I certainly take no personal credit for doing that, but to kind of do a last, for lack of a more eloquent professional term, a last-ditch effort to see that it would happen, because if we didn't take action, it wouldn't have happened at all. But I can't speak for the other members of the board, but I want to be clear that I value the role of the Fourth of July, Scott Gerant and his team, each one of them, for all that they have done for the town over the past, you know, however many years. I don't know that this will always be this way. Later on, when the numbers come up, those are some of the questions that I had planned to bring up to Kendra to take back, to indicate that the board would want to have a more detailed discussion about the carnival, such that, does the town of Wilmington want to be in the carnival business for a long period of time? Or is this a short-term solution until we can work out some other things? You know, I certainly don't want to take away all of the work and effort that the Fourth of July has done, but does it make sense to the town to, you know, financially to continue to do this? Does it not make sense to do this? What are the right answers? And I don't know that I, I personally don't have all the answers tonight for that, but I think it bears discussion.
Getting, getting back to the whole Board of Appeals issue, and again, I'll just be brief in that if it wasn't something for a special, if it would be something for a board-to-board to consider in any angle, that's, you know, that, at least give the residents some input on that, too. So again, I appreciate here from, you know, several members of the board, who just, you know, like I said, is I don't know what the residents out there are thinking as well.
I can say that since our last meeting and how it's been brought up through the whole Fourth of July process, which has been going on for several months, I have not received any direct communication from anybody other than you. And you may, I'm not saying that you're the lone person, there may be other people that feel just like you do, but I haven't received any sort of inquiries or requests to take action.
Thank you, Kendra.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to say, I mean, sort of, I think, like what the other said, I had informal conversations, not on the heels of this becoming an agenda item for tonight, but just through normal communications with two members of the ZBA. And we just sort of kicked around this idea, and both individuals, neither of them are here, so I'm not going to call them out by name, because I really, I probably should have reached out to them to say we were going to be talking about this tonight. Anyway, admittedly, there's five, and I spoke to two, so that doesn't speak a majority at all. But of the two that I spoke to, I got a sense that there was no momentum or, I'll use that word, no momentum among the board itself for, in favor of adding associate members. And the two, the two individuals that I spoke to individually were not in favor of it. So, you know, that wasn't, like I say, I didn't do that specifically as a research project in preparation for this evening, but I'm aware of that. So, you know, that's one piece of that little puzzle there. There was another thing I wanted to say. Oh, yeah, later on, the Fourth of July. So that's all on this.
Okay. Anybody else? Anything? Okay. Anything else, Mr. West? Okay, thank you. All right, let's move on to communications.
All right. First communication is correspondence from Danielle Spicer with Green International Affiliates. These are engineers on the Entile Farm Project. At this point, it's just a communication to let the Board of Selectmen know that for the project, we'll be requesting an extension of the earth-removal permit. Project is still ongoing, we're only five months in, and there is still earth moving going on. So we just want to make sure that we're staying within the limits of the permit and getting an extension as needed.
So just for clarity, the reason why it's a correspondence versus a request at this time is due to advertising requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, so it will be on September meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you for consideration. Next is a memo from Superintendent Public Buildings, George Hooper, over, providing an overview of the DEP water testing project. As many of you are aware, we've been doing a lot of testing of the public schools, the water that's available in there, both water that's specifically for consumption and water that may not be for consumption but is still available within the school through various fixtures. This was launched due to the nationwide issues that were going on relative to lead and copper being found in school buildings. As part of the process, we've done two things. We've done proactive testing, which you've been hearing about since June, as well as applied for the DEP grant. This is a technical, a technical assistance grant. And what it will do is it will allow us to use their resources to create a database of all of the fixtures in our schools, to come up with a mapping system and a categorizing system so that we know which, which each fixture will be called and what its historic testing will be over time. DEP will then also go back through and retest all of the fixtures that could potentially be used for drinking water and upload to this database the ongoing test results. But we do anticipate coming out of the, the various issues with lead and copper throughout the nation, that at some point in time, we are going to start seeing regulations, or at least best practices, recommendations that we test water every three to five years out of the schools. So this allows us to be set up to do that and to do that in an efficient manner. We're also finding, too, that this will help us in terms of mapping all the fixtures for the various testing that we've done just over the last couple of months. We've tested over 240 fixtures. And if you've ever seen the test results, the fixtures are named things like kitchen hand sink next to the dishwasher. And it's hard to remember what you called that every three to five years. So this will allow us to create a serial system so that we know what each fixture is called every time we test, and we can watch how we're doing with those. So it's a very helpful grant, it's a very important grant, and George did a tremendous amount of work getting us involved in this, so.
Just wanted to say thank you on that. I, I know that you personally have called me quite a bit to go over this and make sure that, as Chair, that I'm in the know of what's going on and anything that has hit the press has gone to us so that we're not the last to know, so to speak, on what's going on. So I really appreciate that. I know this was a very concerted effort, just the quantity of fixtures in the schools and the, the footprint, I think, is, is quite a bit. And I think it also should be highlighted that, you know, we would all expect that the high school should have no detection, but I, I think the fact that we're even being as thorough in even testing the new high school fixtures, just to make sure that we have no issues across the board, I think, was the right thing to do. And I just want to send an overall thank you to you and everybody else for taking this on. And I know you've been working with the superintendent of public schools as well.
Yes, so also included in your packet is that press release. This is the final one that we expect to go out. We've received back all of the results. In total, approximately 52 fixtures were found to be at action level above, action level is 15 parts per billion. For lead, we had not, no hits for copper. So we're going through with the school department right now and addressing that. It includes in the cases where we want to ensure that those faucets and fixtures can be used for drinking water, replacing them. If they're not needed for drinking water but are still useful to be in the classrooms or in the lounges or otherwise, posting them as handwashing only, and then removing those that are of concern. It's just keeping you put.
Just from a financial perspective, can you, just for the benefit of this board and the public, where are the fundings going to come from for those replacements?
Sure. So first of all, in terms of the water testing, the MWRA has done the majority the MWRA has done the majority of the water testing for us free of charge, which is good. Each water test costs approximately thirty-five dollars. So having all these tests done through MWRA has been a huge financial savings for the town. In terms of replacement of the fixtures and the bubblers that would come out of the public buildings budget, they have a general school facilities budget. And then anything that couldn't be covered under there would likely be under miscellaneous facilities.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question?
Yes.
If I may, Madam Manager, just with, I appreciate the town being so proactive on this. But what's the message, what message can we give to parents and kids who are going back? What's the timeline in terms of look like for these kids going back to these schools in a couple of weeks? Do we expect them to be all addressed by the time school gets back, or?
We do, for those that are going to be posted as hand-washing only. We've received over two-hundred signs from DEP to put up through the schools. We've taken out the water fountains, so the specifically consumed water areas, those fixtures are, will be replaced or be removed as needed before the start of the school year. And it's going to take a little bit longer to get through and take out some of the older fixtures in some of the buildings that are combined bubbler and hand-washing. We're going to be taking out the bubbler, but we have shut off water to anything that had a hit, just for precaution and just to make sure.
So just to be clear, any bubbler that needs to be addressed will not be accessible? It won't be, even it might be there, but the water won't be on?
Absolutely. Yes.
Nobody will be exposed through a bubbler?
Absolutely. Yes. And then the Board of Health has asked us to just remind parents that if they have any concerns or they want to have their children tested, you can do that through your pediatrician. They can do a lead test just to, you know, peace of mind.
I just have a follow-up question. I understand that it's all the schools that are being tested. How about the other public buildings? Are they as well being tested? Because I know a parent could bring a child into another public building, and there could be a fountain there, whether it's the senior center or the town hall. Are they also on target to be tested?
Yes, they are. Yep. We have scheduled those, so we have specific protocols we have to use. And we are going to be going through and doing the library, the senior center, town hall. I believe we're going to hit public safety as well because that has public bubblers. So yes, wherever there is access to, for public drinking water, we are going to test. Thank you.
If I may, I'm sorry. Just the question just popped in my head. The lead or the problematic issue is in the fixtures at the source, not at the source, but where the water physically comes out. It's not in the pipes that lead to that fixture, is it?
Absolutely. So it's, oftentimes, the lead will come from the solder that's used in the attachment of the fixture to the plumbing. There's a reason why they do two draws. So we do a primary draw and a flush draw. The flush draw is when you run the faucet for thirty seconds. That lets us know that it really is through the soldering and sort of the materials that are in that connection. We know for certain it's not in our water source. We test what's required as a public water source supplier. We're required to test that on a regular basis. Our water does not have lead in it.
And that was the impetus behind the question, was folks may be hearing this and going, Jesus, there's lead in the water. Should I be worried about my faucet at my house? And then the indication is no, unless they have really antiquated fixtures in their home, they may want to have that checked.
Right.
Okay.
It's not uncommon. I mean, now with construction code, they don't even use a lot of the same material. So a lot of this is based on the age of the building. So all the PEX piping and things that contractors use now, it's all plastic in PVC, just so there's no soldering. So some of it's really driven by age components. So, you know, when you look under your sink and you see an old fixture and the traps, a lot of the old plumbing is not even up to code by today's standards. So can't really, you can't say that any house doesn't potentially have the potential for lead, but it's not the water running through the faucet. It's more the existing fixtures that were put in years ago. If you bought a house that's nineteen-thirties and the plumbing's never been touched, chances, could you potentially have it? Can't say you don't, but can't say you do unless you test it.
But it seems like it's the water, even if that situation were the case, it's only that first draw of water that has the potential for the lead in it. It's if you let the water run for a few seconds that you really don't have a problem. Because it's just the water that was sitting in the fixture stagnant for some period of time that may draw out the chemicals.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Very good questions.
It's actually a really good question, Mike. That's why when you do the test, you have to collect it a certain way.
All right. Next is a memo from Director of Public Works, Michael Woods, regarding the improvements that are going to be happening in April Field. This came out of conversations with the school department regarding the field that's used over there, I believe, for girls' softball. Some things that are going to be done this fall include replacing the backstop, replacing the dugouts, replacing the infield and leveling it. Right now, it's not leveled. There's some elevation changes that go on there. And then sodding the transition between the infield and the outfield, so.
So Kendra, I just wanted to interject and say that, one, I think this is outstanding. I think it's definitely needed and due. One thing I just wanted to indicate to you is that I had received a personal invitation to play a fall league down there. And the only reason why I'm bringing that up is because I'm concerned that, about activity going on down there while this is being worked on. And certainly, I'm all in the spirit of seeing leagues and people out playing and being active and doing sports, but I'm assuming that there's been discussions between Michael Woods and the Recreation Department to know about field usage and that all of this fine work won't be impacted by people using the field. And I'm assuming that there'll be some efforts to make sure that people are not going down there on the field while it's being worked on.
Yes.
I know you can't avoid people walking down if the gate's locked, but they're promoting a fall season for softball, and I just don't know how that's going to work there.
So I will have to check in on that. We did have a meeting with the school department, Public Works, and Recreation regarding all of our fields. And this specifically came up in terms of the impact it's going to have on any fall use of it. So let me check in and make sure that we don't have any conflict with the late schedule.
Yeah, I just got the invitation to play this past week, so.
On the sod, I'm assuming that there needs some time for it to set in that soil. So just if it's done within two weeks, it may take a couple of months or not even till next season. Because I think there was an issue with the new high school softball field and usage of that, that it couldn't be used because of the new sod on the field there. So that whole season might be gone for years.
Yeah, we're anticipating that as soon as the sod goes down, that it's going to have to rest. And I think that's one of the reasons why they planned it for the fall, because grass will take either in the spring or the fall, and you got to wait. So absolutely, we'll check and make sure that there's no conflict. Included in with this and going along with it is the notification that the town made to the chairman of the Middlesex Canal Commission, Thomas Raphael. It's from Paula Looney. This is required by law to notify them of any work that's going to be done near the canal. So we've made that, met that requirement. Next is a memorandum from Jamie McGoldy, our operations manager from DPW, and the chair of our Safety Committee, just giving an outline of how we've been doing on our safety efforts. The town is a member of MIA, the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Agency, and they cover us for workers' comp and other liabilities. And through them, they have a program that helps us reduce risk and reduce loss. And our efforts towards that result in credits. The way we do this is everything through training, through checks of our buildings in the wintertime, managing our playgrounds and doing inspections of those at the beginning of every season, truly just everything we can do to eliminate and reduce loss from claims. And the town has once again hit a record in terms of what we've gotten back from rewards. So this just gives you an outline of how we've been doing. As an aside to this, with these rewards, we are allowed to do what's called a flex grant. This is in its second year of being allowed. The flex grant allows us to take half of those rewards and put that towards additional loss control and risk management projects. For the second year, we are going to be proposing using half of that money to fulfill our requirements under Mass. General Law, Chapter 71, Section 37R, which is part of the Education Act and requires that we have two-way communications with our public safety, with police and fire. And this is all related to critical incidents happening in the schools and making sure that they have direct communication to police and fires. So that is what we use some of this funding to do, and the rest just offsets the costs of our annual insurance policy.
Quite an accomplishment.
If I may, I just, I want to compliment Jamie and everyone that participates in this committee. That's, you know, out of the seven categories, the town scored the maximum of possible percentage of credit in every single category. So honest to God, I think that this is a humongous accomplishment, and it's a lot of money. And the money's going to great use for the people of the town. And I really feel strongly that every member of this committee ought to be given kudos, and I do so publicly now. So thank you, Kendra, for presenting this information.
Thank you. Next, we have a memorandum from Town Manager Jeff Hall regarding the costs associated with the Fourth of July. Basically, he's presenting this as a net, so costs less or revenue less expenses in what we come out. And the net expense was nineteen thousand, two-hundred-and-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And that's based on total costs of fifty thousand, four-eighty. To Mr. West's point, the Fourth of July celebration has costs, the town has contributed personnel and supplies to the Fourth of July celebration all along. So whether the town was an applicant or not, these are sort of annual costs anyway. What changed this year was, since the town was the applicant and the entity that entered into agreement with Fiesta Shows for the carnival, the revenue came back to the town for that carnival in the amount of thirty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and fifty cents. That works out to a thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars per hour for twenty-one and a half hours of operation of the carnival, which offset that expense. In the past, we haven't had that offsetting matter.
So if I could just mention again, I mean, it is without question that the volunteers are the ones that make this happen. And, you know, I certainly appreciate the effort of you, Kendra, and Jeff and your team in putting out the RFP, you know, in short order, based on the requests and the action of the Board of Selectmen. And, you know, I think it's something I don't expect you to comment now, but if you can take it back with you and Jeff, and that we can have some future discussions as to, you know, how we're going to proceed with this long-term. And obviously, I am respectful of Scott Grant and his team, and I understand that there may need to be, you know, some discussions with the Fourth of July Committee. Obviously, this celebration, in my opinion, from what I've heard, went over well and it was successful. I'm assuming that there's some internal meetings that are happening in terms of what went well, maybe what didn't go so well, what are some best practices and takeaways. I also just want to get some idea, short-term, long-term, what the town management team believes should be the future direction of the carnival so that we can work with the Fourth of July Committee and just what's the right idea for the community. And then, in addition, if the town, for example, were to take this on, again, obviously, we are going to be preparing, you know, for an FY18 budgetary season. And if that's the case, when does it make sense for an RFP to potentially go out so that if you're doing the budgetary process and you know that you're going to be doing this, if you have those numbers ahead of time going into budget planning, it would certainly be more advantageous. And I'm certainly not an expert on the RFP process, but this, seeing this just lends to other questions, which I know can't be answered tonight. But I think we, as a town and as a board and as a community, you know, have seen what this celebration means to people. We see that there's real numbers and costs associated with it. And I guess, you know, what I'm saying is, is that I'd like to have a better discussion on short-term, long-term plans. I don't know if anyone else on the board has any other comments either.
My question I had earlier, and it was a question to you, Judy. You had indicated that you had asked for some legal advice, or whatever the term is, I forget, about how it would be handled if hypothetically, the Fourth of July Committee were to be the entity to go before the zoning Board of Appeals for the next carnival. I guess I was confused about that. They would be able to do that because it's a different permit, right? I mean, it's a whole, it's a different event. It's a different day.
Well, that's, usually, if you get, if you, my understanding is that for special permit requests, that if you get denied, there's a two-year period.
Okay, thanks.
And I didn't know if, the question was, if it's the same applicant, but you change the scope of the proposal, is that enough to be able to be heard the following year? Or is it driven by the applicant name?
Yeah, I think that that's one of the things we're trying to clarify. It certainly, we looked into what drives that two-year sort of moratorium on going back. And I think we found that it wasn't necessarily the applicant, because, you know, if you think about it in an example, someone could go back and just keep re-changing their name and apply again, that it's more about what you're applying for. And the fact that they approved an application for this type of permit might, in fact, lift that. But we do need to look into it with Town Council and make sure that we're clear about how to proceed in accordance with zoning.
Their original application was substantially different than the one that the town put forth.
Right.
So I would, if the decision were being, were to be eventually made, that we wanted to put it back on the Fourth of July Committee, and I know you want to have that conversation, but if that were the direction we ended up going, and the Fourth of July Committee were to put through a request, or, yeah, a permit request, if they adhered to a permit request that looked very much like the one that the town put forth, that would be, I think, this is just my informal, non-expert opinion, but it seems like that would rise to the level of being substantially different enough from their original presentation last year. But as you say, I would be anxious to hear what Town Council has to say.
Yeah, and the reason why, I mean, I want to be supportive of what's in the best interest of the town, but I also take no credit, you know, personally for this event. I mean, this is Fourth of July Committee. It's the working hands of all of the men and women that are involved in that. They're the volunteers that make this happen. In addition, the funding that they were receiving, you know, from this, they didn't get the share. And they put on the fireworks, you know, they took that, they took that expense. Granted, the town saw a fit as a community to grant the warrant article for the twenty-five thousand dollars. But also, too, they do the tree lighting, they do other activities that they rely on this funding that they didn't get. So I'm not saying, I'm not weighing in one way or another, but I, that's not lost on me, is my point. So, you know, we did have a successful event, and, you know, the town did receive revenue. And I do think that the Fourth of July and the town, you know, should work together. I just think it need, the discussions for, you know, the manager and Scott and the town as a whole have, you know, what makes sense, what doesn't make sense.
And what role does the Board of Selectmen have in that, I guess, at the end of the day? Certainly, the town management and Fourth of July Committee can wrestle with what the most appropriate pathway is. But at some point, you know, we would have to, I guess, grant the use of town land. I guess that would be our role at some, if, do we get to decide if it's the Fourth of July Committee that would be the permitting, the requestor? Or do we get to decide that we don't want the Fourth of July Committee to do it and that we want the town to do it? You know what I mean? Does that, does that fall on our shoulders?
Well, I think, you know, it's a very good question. I mean, I'd like to understand a little bit more history of the Fourth of July, I mean, Committee. I thought originally that it was part of the town, you know. And the Fourth of July Building is technically the town's building, you know. So is, should the Fourth of July be a standalone committee? Should it come under and be under the town's purview and be, you know, similar to boards and committees that we have? I don't know the answer, you know. That's what we need to figure out.
I can say that Town Manager is looking to schedule a debrief with all the different departments and with the Fourth of July Committee to understand, you know, what went well and what didn't. And to start that conversation of what next year would look like, depending on how it goes forward. So I think that that work needs to be done before a whole lot more can really be figured out on this.
Thank you.
No, I mean, looking at the financial report, it looks like it, it seems as if it worked out well for the town. And I would like to know if the Fourth of July Committee, are they going to present some sort of a revenue and expense report as well? Or where did the monies from the firework come from, you know, did it come from them? I would almost be in favor of the town keeping it as it did this year with taking in the carnival. I mean, we're spending fifty thousand dollars, and we're recouping at least some of it back. And we probably could have recouped a little bit more where the carnival operated for twenty-one-point-five hours. But the town manager, I think, stopped it on Sunday early. Probably could have got another eight or nine thousand dollars if he didn't just automatically stop it. So that could have been another plus to the town as well. And, you know, the town can treat the Fourth of July as an appointed committee. Appoint the same committee that they have and go that route if you're talking about committees in that sense. But I think it's something that should be discussed and looked at. And I would be in favor of it being done the same way as it was this year, with the town taking that on.
You know, I understand. You know, I understand where you're coming from, you know. I think we don't see the financials that they have. And, you know, I don't want to offend anybody on that Committee. I don't, I'm not insinuating that things aren't, you know, the way they should be. But because we're not privy to their financial model, I know that they've relied on, from what I can have been told, is that they rely on this revenue production from the carnival to drive the other activities that they do. And as a result of that, I just don't, you know, if we could have the event, the town does it, but I don't know that the revenue stream that they were once getting, if that goes away, if they're going to be able to sustain their activity levels that they've been able to provide to the town all year, every year.
Specifically fireworks, right?
Fireworks, you know, they've done the tree lighting, they've done, you know, other things. So, I just don't, you know, I can't speak for Scott and his team, but, you know, they rely on this to be able to keep those other activities going. And, you know, so we may be solving one problem, but creating another is my point. You know, people like the tree lighting, they'd like to do other things, you know, this cost associated with doing that. Yes.
I was just going to say Judy, one nice thing, speaking on behalf of some, of one of many people who worked in one of the nonprofit booths, the nonprofits, you know, it was, it was nice to have it back at the common from a nonprofit standpoint, because that money in addition goes back to the community in some fashion, be it scholarships or youth activities. So, I think that the, bringing it back to the common helped the nonprofits that were there. And certainly, you know, whatever nonprofits will be there in future years. It was a lot better model than it was at the, at the Shriners. So, that's hidden revenue back to the town, again, in form of, like I say, scholarships and youth-based activity. Probably primarily youth-based activity and church activity.
I would agree with you. I mean, obviously, I feel like major discussions like this, I feel badly that Jeff isn't here. And I also would obviously like Scott or the 4th of July Committee to be a part of this. You know, sitting as a layperson, as a resident, I want to try and keep as many people as happy as possible. But the numbers here, you know, just to put it out there, undeniable that it has been helpful and advantageous to the town. You know, the money that's being spent is, shouldn't be lost on anybody, that it's actually taxpayers' money that's paying that fifty thousand annually. And so, the fact that we were able to put thirty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents back into the general reserve funds, and at the same time, the town residents saw fit to award twenty-five thousand dollars towards this as well, you know, I think shows the commitment that the town and the residents have made to this celebration. While at the same time, you know, you don't want to offend anybody on a Committee that have put their, you know, their 4th of July week towards this. And so, I don't want to offend anybody. But this seriously needs to be looked at. I mean, you know, does it make sense, you know, for things to be done differently?
Well, one thing you might want to look at Judy is, is what other expenses were there? Such as if the 4th of July paid the fireworks, what was that bill? And then, the other thing you're saying is that if the town absorbs the 4th of July as a town body, you know, now is the town going to take on the 4th of July Committee events such as tree lighting? And, you know, what expenses are involved in those? So, I think, I think your balance sheet might be a little skewed.
That's what I'm saying. We might solve one problem and create another.
Yeah.
You know, and I also, you know, I don't want to do the right thing by the town, but I don't want to be mistaken in this conversation to say that I can just, I think we should just pull all their activities and make them the town's. I don't want to offend anybody by saying that, but I think we need to look at this, you know, is all I'm saying.
If I may, fireworks do typically cost anywhere between ten and twenty thousand, and that's not reflected here. And I also just do want to note, I know the 4th of July Committee, despite the fact that the carnival was not technically theirs this year, did put in a lot of work in terms of the things that they've done all along, whether the carnival was under their umbrella or not, in terms of doing the legwork, being there, answering questions, helping people, yeah. But, you know, to your comment about, you know, whether or not the balance sheet is skewed, it does not represent the fireworks. And the fireworks would probably eat up a good chunk of this if the town was to take on that.
Right. And they don't have a deposit to put in, to put towards next year's fireworks. So, we're definitely going to have, this is going to create, you know, more discussion, for sure.
Madam Jessel.
Yes.
Kendra, you mentioned that there's going to be a debriefing. Could you just let us know when that's going to be, when you do schedule it? And we'd be curious to see what the feedback was, and hopefully that could be brought to the board. Obviously, I think we're all eager to hear what the 4th of July Committee has to say and the other nonprofits.
So, it's going to be tough, because, you know, they put so much work into planning this event. And if the revenue stream isn't there for them to feed that fireworks, they're going to have to fundraise for it. And that's going to saddle them with another whole set of responsibilities. So, I don't, you know, I clearly think this has been beneficial to the town, but I also recognize that this may impact other activities and other things that residents enjoy. And if those things cannot be funded and they potentially are at risk of going away, which I'm not saying that they are, but if they do, we're going to get more phone calls and we're going to be having more meetings here. So, we might as well get on the front end of it and come up with a plan.
Well, if I may, Madam Judy, is that you just want to be careful in that if now, if the 4th of July now becomes a, 4th of July Committee becomes a fundraising committee, will that take away from the nonprofits that are also trying to fundraise? Either at the same time or at different times, you know what I'm saying? It's just, you know, people might start saying, well gee, now do I pay for the, do I chip in ten bucks for the fireworks? Or do I buy us begin supper or something? Or how does that all?
Well, that's a valid point.
Well, listen, the 4th of July does have a raffle throughout the week of that event. So, they are raising funds. They are a fundraising committee of sorts as well. So, I know that as a non, part of a nonprofit organization, we make a donation and we sell raffle tickets for them in order to, you know, probably have the fireworks done, so.
I think that's, in some respects, Kendra, I think that becomes more of a, almost an admission fee to become, to have the, you know, to be a nonprofit running the, a booth or something like that of sorts, you know what I mean?
But they're not selling just to the booths, they're selling to the people who come, the five thousand people that come, yeah.
I think it's a lot of moving parts. I think also too, you know, their financials, we're not, I don't, I've never seen them. So, I don't know how well they're doing or how well they're not doing, I don't know. But I just know that all of this costs a lot of money and there's a lot of moving parts. And, you know.
They're doing a great job.
So, I just think we need, I just think that we need to put it on the table for further discussion. Anything else?
Look forward to Part B.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Moving on, the next communication is from the Attorney General's Office. This is the annual review of the town meeting warrants. The Attorney General's Office reviews them for any conflicts with state, with the state constitution or state law. They've approved everything. They did have comments on the dog bylaw first relative to the late fee that's charged for people licensing their dogs late. And the second is ensuring that we're aware we need to be compliant with state law relative to kennels. In both cases, they've advised us to consult with Town Council, which we have. And Town Council is comfortable with the bylaws and our ability to implement them and consistent with the AG's requirements. Next is communication from Ms. Sarah White, letting the town know that its hazardous, its hazard mitigation plan has been accepted. This is a plan that's typically required in order to be eligible for grant funding. Hazard mitigation is basically looking at areas and issues that could potentially create damage, loss, or danger to Wilmington as the result of a natural issue. So, it's things like making sure that our trees are in good condition and we're aware of any issues with trees, so that if we have high winds, we're reducing the amount of damage that could occur, we're reducing flood areas, we're reducing any impacts to water flow in cases of flash flood and things like that. The plan is on our website. And just if you're looking for the Cliff's Notes version, page ninety-two gives you a summary of the previous plan and the action items and how we've done on them. Page ninety-nine tells you the strategies. And page one oh one, or one oh eight of the plan that's available online is the table form of what our hazardous mitigation plan is going forward. So, what are we going to do and how we're going to do it. Next is a summary on the Act to Modernize Municipal Finance and Government. This is the Governor's Municipal Modernization Act. The governor, the lieutenant governor, and the staff deserve a whole lot of credit for the effort that they've done to try and go through and get rid of some of the more arcane and problematic issues of state law that impacts municipal operations. I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but I do just want to point out some highlights that might be of interest. The Modernization Act updates procurement laws relative to vertical and horizontal construction. The procurement laws were changed in 2012. This is another update. This is actually fairly fast for the state to be updating procurement laws so frequently. So, we're happy to see that. It also updates the certification for local property assessments. Currently, we have to do a tri-annual assessment. It can now go to five years. That's going to save the town money. There is in here information and changes to departmental revolving funds. Revolving funds are where you can put money aside from the general fund that are be allowed to use for specific uses. So, they've loosened the restrictions on that. They are modernizing elections, allowing for electronic polling booths for elections. They're increasing tax abatements for veterans, specifically adding the eligibility to spouses of veterans for certain exemptions. They've increased the Senior Citizen Property Tax Work Off Program, the limit. It's going from a thousand to fifteen hundred per eligible member, which is a good thing. They've changed the overlay. The overlay is what we set aside for abatements and cases that go through the ATB. Before, each year, your overlay had to stay separate from another year. Now, we can group them all together, which is a, allows for future savings for the town. And, oh, and of, I think the last two things, allows the towns and municipalities to now set speed limits for twenty-five miles per hour. So, typically, you would have to get approval through Mass DOT to change speed limits aside from what's put into the MUTI, the Massachusetts Uniform Traffic Control, something or other. So, we now have local authority to do that in certain areas. And the governor has put in his attempt to address double poles in municipalities. Right now, it really is about creating a committee to study this and come up with a proposal for a fine structure and for a understanding of what the double pole issue is throughout the state and moving forward with it.
Can I ask one question about that?
Sure.
Please, on page four of the overall, at the last one on page four, it's approval of bills and warrants. And it says, "These sections allow multi-member boards, committee, commission heading departments, including boards of selectmen, to designate one of its members to review and approve bills or payment warrants with a report provided at the next meeting." It says to me that, if this is, if I'm reading it correctly, that the Wednesday afternoons, three of us, minimum signing of the warrant could be reduced to one. And then, the, that warrant, a report of that warrant could be presented at the subsequent Board of Selectment meeting. Am I accurate?
Yes, I believe so. I haven't had a chance to look through the details of it, but I believe yes.
And am I accurate in assuming that this is something we can elect to do and are not required to do?
As I said, I haven't had a chance to read the specific language of the laws and whether or not it has it as by adoption or just blanket allowed.
Okay. Be interesting to explore that perhaps at some future date, because I think that that potentially is a positive.
We'll get more information on that. Next is correspondence from Ms. Jacqueline Santini, the new member of the Board of Appeals, regarding notification of interest relative to an application of a special permit. This is actually going to be taken up under Board to Consider. So, this is mostly just a notice from the Town Manager outlining what the Board of Selectmen are going to consider tonight in terms of potential conflict of interest. And so, we'll go into that. And the final, I believe the final correspondence is from Jill Reddish from Verizon, letting us know that MTV is out and Nickelodeon's in.
Okay, so moving on to the Board to Consider items. So, Board to Consider the Request of the Board of Appeals Regarding the Disclosure in accordance with Chapter 268A, Section 19 and 23B 3, Relative to an Application for a Special Permit by James Mangano. Want to take us through?
Sure. So, this is related to, Ms. Santini identified that an agent in the office that she works in is working with an applicant who has a matter before the Zoning Board of Appeals. Upon advice, she did contact the Ethics Commission and Town Council to get advice as to how to proceed. And she was advised to submit two notices of potential conflict of interest, one regarding financial interest and the other regarding perception of conflict. And in those cases, the financial interest has to come before the Board of Selectmen in order to decide as to whether or not there is a conflict for her to participate in that hearing. And then, the other is for the Board to vote as to whether or not it feels that there is a perception of conflict of interest for her to participate. If the Board so chooses to find there is no conflict, then you will make two votes tonight. And she will sit for the hearings. If you choose that there is conflict, you will note so. And she will have to recuse herself from those hearings. And I believe she's here with us tonight.
Hi. Okay, so we have the matter here before us. It is a Board to Consider item. It's definitely a lengthy package. All the information, from what I can tell, appears to be in order. I've obviously reviewed it. I assume that all of my fellow Board members have as well. I don't know if anyone has any questions, comments, or any discussion points at this time.
Questions, if I may? Good evening, Ms. Santini. I have a few questions for you. My first question is a...
Jackie, do you mind just coming up to the table here, please? Thank you. Thanks, Ken.
Thanks for being here. Could you just help me out, trying to figure out, at what point did you find out that your colleague, you had this potential conflict with your colleague and this, and this is client? Is it him or she, excuse me, your colleague?
It's a team. They're a team. Knowing that they have done business in the past, I saw the name. I, being new to the Board of Appeals, and I, I wanted to make sure that, that I did the right thing. So, I contacted the State Ethics Commissioner, and she had given me some direction. And one of the questions was regarding the financial portion of it, the Section 19 was, I needed to find out whether or not he was definite, that the team was actually working with him on that particular project. So, then I contacted the agent and determined that he was, they were working on that project. So, the answer was yes.
My second question here is, did you bring it upon yourself? Did you, did you contact the State Ethics Commission yourself, or did they contact you or some advisor?
No, I contacted them because I wanted to make sure that I was doing and going in the right direction, making sure that no one thought that I wasn't going in the right direction with, you know, making sure I, I'm new to the Board of Appeals, and I just want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest or nobody thought that there would be. I take it very seriously.
And my last question, in your best estimation, do you believe that you have any direct or indirect financial interest in this matter?
I have, I have no direct financial interest at all. And I've never worked with Jimmy Mangano in the past.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yeah, related, if I may. Thank you Jackie for being here. This agent is a colleague you work in the same real estate agency. But you're all, you're both individual agents, sort of independent, as it were?
Our office is a designated office, which we are all independent contractors. So, what he, what another agent does in the office... So what another agent does in the office, I have known, everything's confidential between my clients and myself, and their clients are confidential, so I wouldn't know what another agent's doing or not doing. It's, we're all independent.
So you answered the question that I was about to ask, which is, there's no hierarchy. You don't report to he and he not to you. You're just, you're out there sort of doing your own thing.
Exactly. Our own business.
Okay. Yeah, and so, thank you. You've answered the question about the financial, I guess, potential for financial conflict. I'm comfortable with that. I guess the other, the other question is the perception of favoritism, or what was that, what was the terminology?
Perception of conflict of interest.
Just a perception that, you know, where you have a relationship, a working relationship, a business association with this agent, would that friendship or that relationship influence your decision-making when it's time to listen to the appeal?
No, because I don't benefit, I don't benefit from what he does or doesn't do. It wouldn't, it doesn't affect me. It wouldn't affect me.
Okay.
The way that I feel.
Forgive me, I don't, I want to, when I ask that question, I'm not asking it like, you know, I'm not trying to play gotcha. I just, I wanted to hear you kind of say it publicly, that there is no negative or positive that could come from your rendering of a decision as a member of the zoning board of appeals, that that would have no bearing on the relationship that you have with this individual in your office?
Absolutely correct, because at the end of the day, and what I, I am for the town of Wilmington, and whatever I need to do in that aspect, that comes first and foremost in my mind.
Thank you.
So just to, go ahead.
Again, yeah, just to reiterate, I know you say it won't affect you, but you are working with these individuals on a daily basis. Don't you think it would affect them, your decision on this?
At the end of the, to me, whether it affects them or not, my job is to the town of Wilmington, so if it does a, I'm not, I don't know if this sounds harsh, I'm not concerned whether it benefits them or not. My direction is doing the right thing for the town of Wilmington and what the laws are stating for zoning. If that makes, did that answer that? I'm not worried about them being mad at me if I, if I believe at the end of the day that my decision, whatever it may be, is gonna, they're gonna be mad at me one way or another. I'm not worried about being in the office at the same time as them, if it doesn't go their way.
Well, I think, just to kind of put my feelings out there, is that you are hearing an application for a prospective builder that is going to be developing a piece of land. They already have an established relationship with your office, so he's already made a commitment to do business with the agents that are involved in, correct?
Well, let me, so, they do work a lot together, but don't interpret the office being, I'm not the office, it's, just, I'm not the office, I'm just an independent agent.
Right. We are all 1099 employees, you're independent contractors, so you're a business within a business. And you potentially could be, could be competing against your own people in your own office, because you both could go out on a listing presentation for a given house, or both could be, you know, having conversations with the same neighbor that's interested in buying a house, and they may potentially choose you over a buyer's agent versus someone else in your office, and those things happen all the time.
True.
So as a result of that, as a designated agency, the contracts that exist between Mr. Mangano and anyone else in your office, one are confidential.
Yes.
Two, as a designated agency, only they represent Mr. Mangano in the contract. If you were a non-designated agency, that would mean that every agent in your office would effectively represent the seller.
Correct.
But because you're a designated agency, that is not the case. And it's very specific. That's what a designated agency means. And so that actually aids in your confidentiality, in my opinion, not having a direct conflict, because only the two members in your office represent Mr. Mangano, not all of RE/MAX Encore.
Correct.
It's just the specific agents that are named in the contract that may or may not exist at this time. So that's, that's a very important distinction to make. I believe that, you know, you could face having the same situation where a neighbor comes forward, that your direct neighbor that wants to put up, you know, something, and you would feel that you could have some conflict or perceived conflict because you're in a butter. So these things happen, you know, all the time. In asking the question if you have any direct financial interest, you've indicated the answer is no. An indirect interest would be that, you know, as a result of granting this permit as a voting member, if you received three months' worth of free desk fees, for an example. It doesn't sound to me like that's the case, that you're going to receive an indirect benefit. Is that true?
That's true. And the only reason, when I saw his name and knowing that they have worked together because they've worked building developments, I just felt comfortable enough to say, hey, are you, are you working with him on this, on this address? Otherwise, I wouldn't have known. If I didn't, I mean, I won't know what everybody's doing. I just happen to know that they do work a lot. It could, the answer could have been no, that they weren't working together, and that would have solved that, but because I felt comfortable enough to ask him, hey, are you guys working on this one together? And he said, yes, I needed to take the next step. I just wanted to make sure it was covered. But I won't know, I won't know, there's many agents working with other builders. I don't know who's working with who, what, when. Like I said, I just wanted to make sure it was clear. I happen to know that they work with him a lot. Does he work only with him? No.
No.
So I, I just do.
The way the business typically works is that you, if someone is the source of a lead, they make it the deal back through them or what have you, so it's not a universal, you know, commitment for every deal. So I recognize that. You know, I just want to say that, you know, I'm asking questions more just to kind of get the answers out publicly.
Oh, sure.
Obviously, I was very supportive of you as a candidate for the Board of Appeals, and, you know, under full disclosure, I also have a real estate license as well. So having said that, I don't, I don't feel that that impedes my ability to be able to hear this case tonight, or even to render a decision on your ability to do this. I think, you know, what needs to be stated is that boards and committees in this town rely on volunteers, that you could have potential perceived conflicts all of the time, whether it's a neighbor coming in with a town issue, or Mr. McCoy voting on a common vixial license for another pizza place, he's voted in favor of hundreds of them, I'm sure, over the years, and, you know, you know, so perceived conflicts happen all the time. I believe in your character and your integrity, that you'll be able to hear a case on behalf of the town of Wilmington, and be able to apply the framework that you're hearing the case within, and be able to make an informed, effective, and fair decision. I believe that you have the ability to do that. That's the reason why I suggested that you be appointed. I stand by those comments. So I just want to put that out there as part of this discussion.
Thank you.
And just to your point, Madam Chair, I just, I would agree. In supporting you last month for this appointment, I'm pleased to see that, you know, you could have easily looked the other way or not approached the State Ethics Commission, and quite frankly, members of this board would have never known. So I appreciate, you know, you and your integrity to look into this and to cover your basis, as you said before, and I think that says a lot about you and what type of board member you'll be, so I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To your credit, you did bring it before the Board. I just want to touch upon what Selectmen, Kira brought up, you did bring up a couple valid points. And I understand, you said there's like Team One or Team A, and you're a part of another team. Those individuals, those individuals that are representing Mr. Mangano, and it's been established relationship for a long time, to your credit, you brought that forward, are those also independent workers like yourself, or are they part of the management, or are they part of the owners that you work for? That, what specific team is that? Is it, like I said, is it just like you, as an independent worker? Are they basically, they are?
They're independent. There are teams that can be more than one person. I'm, me, myself, and I, my team. But I'm not on a team, I'm by myself. There's teams that are more than one person, but they are independent, they are together.
Are they part of the ownership, or are they just independent workers like yourself? They, the owners of the company?
They are indepen, they, one, one of them is an owner of that team, but they are a team individually, and I'm my own team. And that's-
And just to follow up, as, so one of them is an owner of the business that you are an independent person for, but when you sell a house or something, do you give a percentage to that owner? Aren't you still responsible to that owner?
There, there is, well, there's, there's fees that I pay as a businessperson, being independent, as an independent contractor, there's fees that I do pay.
So a percentage of your deal, there's a portion of that that goes into the house, so to speak, meaning RE/MAX Encore is an entity?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I mean, she's working for someone.
Correct.
So she's working for the person who is involved with this building? Okay.
Correct. One of them is an owner?
Yeah.
Right. So at this point, we need to decide whether or not we are going to take action or not take any, make a determination, and if we would have to take them up separately.
Yes, please. In the memo provided to you by the town manager, it gives some proposed language in terms of a motion, either finding no conflict or finding conflict. This, by using this, this motion language, it just helps to make sure that we're tying specifically to the sections of law that this pertains to. So obviously, you can make whatever motion you want, but it's just there for your recommendation.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. You said there was going to be required two votes, and help me understand again what those two different votes are about.
Certainly. So the first vote for you would be regarding a financial interest, and that is Section 19. The second vote would be the appearance of conflict or the perception of conflict, which is Section 23B.3.
So do we take these up separately?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Just for clarification, if we, one was to pass and one was to fail tonight, what would happen?
She cannot sit for the, for that hearing.
So she needs both to pass?
Yes.
You know, just, just putting it out there, I believe that you more than have the capacity to do this and do so impartially. I think the struggle that people are having, and it's, and it's real, is the fact that one of the parties that's part of this, and I don't want to speak for other board members, is an owner of the company that has financial gain from your production. So the perception of conflict, you know, speaking for myself, it's nothing personal towards you or towards RE/MAX Encore. I think it's a, it's a difficult thing for people to understand, if they're not in the real estate business, how the framework is, if it was just one of the parties and you're both independent contractors, and she had her business, and you had yours, and you both reported up to a broker-owner, and you're independent. I think the struggle that, that, looking at this, is the fact that one of them is an owner, that technically has financial interest in the company that you work for indirectly. So I'm not speaking for my colleagues, but I think that's, that's the struggle that I'm sensing that people are having. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Yeah, very accurate.
I mean, I don't have a problem with the first, with the financial interest, but I do have a problem with the second, with the conflict of interest.
So, you know, I think that is not to, I would kindly suggest that you don't take that personal, but I think that that, that, and that's, that's nothing that you've done wrong, you're doing everything right by bringing it forward, but I think that's the struggle, is that if that individual didn't, in essence, for lack of a better way to put it, it gives the perception that that is your superior, your boss, somebody that you report into. Does that make sense? As a broker-owner, you know, to oversee the office, and who essentially, you know, has allowed you to hang a license there.
Yes.
Conduct business, they're receiving a financial gain from your, you know, I'm not saying that it, that it impedes your ability to hear Mr. Mangano's case, and that's really what this is about, is your role, but I think it, what I'm hearing is that people are concerned about the perception of the conflict.
But you had, you had mentioned just a second ago, so, but I, even though that I hang, I hang my license there, there's still no financial gain, or there's, there's nothing for me to gain, because all my business is what I bring in.
Right.
But, yeah. I mean, I, well, I'll, you know, whatever, I, you know, I wanted to bring it up just to make sure that you knew where I was coming from and, and how I wanted to perceive, and, yeah.
I think it's clear that it's, the financial gain isn't there, it's the second part of the perception of the conflict of interest, I think, is what I'm hearing people are struggling with, is that, I'm repeating myself, but-
That's, yeah, well, I'm, I'll just go on record and say that I understand that that could be perceived as an area of concern, but you made the point just a few moments ago, that we're all volunteers, and we're, there's a number of folks in this town that participate in many organizations and activities, and it's inevitable, we run into people we know, and we have to, we sit on this board, and we have to render and make decisions sometimes that impact people that we know and like, and hang out with maybe socially. And, you know, that's the way it goes. Sometimes you make the right decision for them, and they're happy with you, and sometimes you make a decision and they're unhappy with you. And I give you the Fourth of July. That, that put a lot of people at odds with each other, who had never been at odds with each other in the past, but that was, those were tough times, and we all have to have faith in each other, that unless there is a clear and evident case of a conflict of interest, that the people that we've appointed to these positions, Ms. Santini, have the ability to think, to be able to review these things without, without bias, and to render a decision that's based on what is best for the town of Wilmington and the people of the town of Wilmington, and not, not what's best for a, an individual or some small pocket of individuals. I made a recommendation and voted in favor of Ms. Santini, because I believe that to be her, in her character, a few weeks ago. I believe it tonight. In as much as I'm sensitive to and understand how someone could look at some of the data here and, and the orientation, or the way the organization is set up at RE/MAX Encore, at the end of, at the end of the day, I have confidence in Ms. Santini's ability to keep those two worlds separate, and so I'm going to advocate that we, that we authorize her to listen to this case. I'm prepared to make the motion and read the language for it, but I don't want to go through that exercise if we think that we're not going to get to that point.
Well, I think that we have to get to that point and make a motion, so I think if you're open to doing that, I'm not trying to sway your decision, but from a procedural standpoint, perhaps you read it in, and then we take a vote on it.
So shall we then?
One moment. So I will read this motion as the appointing authority, as required by general law, Chapter 268A, Section 19. We have reviewed the particular matter contained in the disclosure as filed with us, and the financial interest identified by the municipal employee, and determine that the financial interest is not so substantial as to be deemed likely to affect the integrity of the services which the town of Wilmington may expect from the employee.
So shall I accept that in the form of a motion? That's your motion?
Please, yes.
Okay, motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just offer the discussion that I made a moment ago. I just offer the discussion that I made a moment ago.
Okay. All those in favor for this motion signify by raising your hand. Okay, four, anyone opposed? Okay, four, four, one opposed, it passes. Okay, and then moving on to the second portion, and this is with reference to disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest. Anyone have questions, comments, or want to make a motion?
I don't want to steal the microphone here, but I'm inclined to, to make a similar motion unless someone wants to step in front.
No, I think you should do what you, you think is right, Michael, if you feel inclined to make that.
I would move as follows. As the appointing authority, as required by general law, chapter 268A, section 23B, subsection three, we have reviewed the particular matter contained in the disclosure as filed with us and whether a reasonable person could conclude that someone would unduly enjoy your favor or improperly influence you when performing your duties with respect to a specific matter before the Board of Appeals and determine that your circumstances would not lead a reasonable person to reach that conclusion.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second?
I have a question.
Yeah, discussion.
Do we have any, um, anything from the Ethics Commission of their opinion on it? I noticed that her town council said that we should take the advice of the Ethics Commission.
May I, Chair, so there was, um, from the, this, may I speak?
Yes, absolutely.
So Nora from the State Commission, the attorney, her name's Nora, she did submit a letter and, and all of the details. And her point was not so much an opinion of what, her opinion was you either submit section 19 or you, I mean, um, section 19, or you submit section 23 and if you do one, you need, you know, such and such. So what I did was exactly, since I knew that, yes, these two were working together, that brought in the financial element interest to it, so that's why I filed the first one. And then the second one was, you had the second, um, 23B is what came with it for the appearance. That's what the instructions were to do.
Okay.
Does that, does that help you? I mean, that's, she's just there to kind of guide.
She was to guide you, she didn't necessarily give you an opinion as to, yes, you are in definite conflict or no, you shouldn't participate or et cetera, et cetera. She gave you the process to, and is basically bringing it back to a town level for us to basically decide.
Correct, and then also John Fawcett was involved, aware of all of the communication.
Yes.
And then it's ultimately the selectmen's, um, decision.
Okay.
Well, just, may I, just a form of discussion, continued discussion, is that, that from my perspective, you've not only brought this to the attention of the state ethics, you've brought this to the attention of the town council and the Board of Selectmen. One could argue that taking, accepting this position, that you could potentially in the future perhaps lose out on a client. You know, it's not too far fetched to think that, you know, because of your position, that perhaps you may have to pass up a client. And so that you therefore could potentially lose money in the future, having accepted this position. So my point is that, uh, that tells me a lot about where you're coming from, having obviously had a successful business in the past and looking to volunteer, so much so that you're willing to potentially maybe lose out on some, uh, uh, income in the future down the line, therefore sacrificing your, your, you know, yourself and, and volunteering. That tells me a lot about where you're coming from, so I feel comfortable supporting you, knowing that, that you've made that sacrifice and obviously are willing to do so. And so I feel comfortable that, you know, that comes to a decision that you need to make, that you're going to make it in the best interest of the town.
Anything further? Okay, motion's been made, it's been seconded, at this point I will call for the vote. All those in favor? Three opposed, two, it passes. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on to the next board to consider, please. Next. That's on the warrant.
Yep.
Uh, so board to consider the signing of the warrant for the state primary to be held Thursday, September 8th, 2016. I know that you are going to make some comments on this, Kendra, but I just wanted to reiterate per our pre-meeting for this meeting, if you can talk about the schools and security as part of that presentation, please.
So as the, the selectmen may recall, when the discussion about changing poll, polling locations came up, the solution proposed was for those elections where we believed there would be significant traffic, significant impact on the schools, the schools would close, they are scheduled to be closed in the polling locations for the general election. However, for the state primary, there really isn't a high turnout expected here, not a high impact on the students. So the school committee has, um, has elected to have school open on the state primary day, so, which is going to be the 8th of September, 2016. The primary goes from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. And the offices that are being considered as part of the primary are as the representative in Congress, Sixth District, counselor, Fifth District, Senate and the General Court, First Essex and Middlesex District, representative in General Court, 19th Middlesex District, representative in General Court, 21st Middlesex District, and the sheriff from Middlesex County, and these are all state offices.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to sign the warrant for the state primary to be held Thursday, September 8th, 2016?
So moved?
Motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item is board to consider the request of Police Chief Michael Begones to use Rotary Park for a movie night on Friday, September 16th, 2016, with a rain date of Saturday, September 17th. And it's my understanding, based on my conversation with Jeff and with you, Kendra, that this was due to, um, equipment issues and they weren't able to do the, the movie during the national night out, and this is a, um, a date to bring that back.
Right, this is a make-up date since they had technical issues with the movie during national night out.
Would anyone like to make a motion to grant this request? And there's, there's no issues, I'm assuming, conflicts with that request?
Not at all.
Okay.
I'll move to grant the request.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Next item is a board to consider the request of Mary Ellen Dunn for the Wilmington United Methodist Church to place signs on the town common for October 15th through the 29th of 2016. From what I understand from Jeff and Kendra certainly feel free to comment, is that he's had discussions about quantity and placement.
Yes. Not aware of the details, but yes, he has.
Okay. So anyone want to make a motion to grant this request?
I'll make a motion to grant the request.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous, okay? Last item is a board to consider the request of Mark Nelson to conduct a block party on Monday, September 5th, 2016, from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. I do see that there's a letter from Mr. Nelson, I wanted to see if he had any comments, Kendra, any discussion points, just to reiterate, you know, um, police involvement with this and if they oversee that and, and thoughts on looking at this with the time parameters.
Uh, so the town has approved these requests in the past, specifically from this applicant. The police department does not have a negative recommendation.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motion?
I would just, uh, make a comment that perhaps we could reach out to the applicant and they would maybe perhaps, I'm in favor of granting it, but perhaps reconsider the end time. I noticed that it's 11:00 PM and it is a school night. So it's, I just didn't know if anyone else, if we could reach out, if they would be willing to maybe scale it back a bit or if they're set, dead set on 11:00 PM. It's, I believe it's the, labor, this is Labor Day, the next day is Tuesday, which is a school day.
I would think because this is coming up before there is another Board of Selectmen meeting, if it is something that you do want to see closed down earlier in the evening, then you can vote that, so vote it for a time, make that part of your motion. Because this is coming before the board and there isn't another meeting to have before we would have a chance to reach out to the applicant.
So having said that, I mean, go ahead, no, go ahead.
The assistant manager's saying you can vote for it, but put a time on it, for example, Mr. Vandal, if you made nine o'clock, is that what we're looking to do?
So, I mean, I, you may not know the answer to this, Kendra, and I apologize for spotting you with this, but, you know, do you recall if there's been, I know in having discussions with Jeff that he's, wants to start working on a, a criteria and a protocol for block party requests because we're getting so many. Not to say that everyone has to be one size fits all, but things like times, things like egress and, and safety plans and things like that, I know he's looking at, at all of that, is that correct?
That is true.
So is 11 o'clock, you know, historically, would other requests have come in for?
I, I have to admit, I don't know.
I didn't expect that you would. At night, okay.
Maybe I should add that if that's the, been the practice of the town, that's been, maybe that's, again, I'm new to this, this is my, only my second block potty request, but, and don't get me wrong, I, I like a good potty myself, but I'd be embarrassed to tell you what time I go to bed on a school night, so. I just thought it would be, we should discuss.
That is an important point, it is on a Monday night.
It is, it is an important point, so, um...
Only a teacher would see the date and I give you credit to that, you know?
Yeah.
But not to interrupt, is it, it says a private way, is he the only one that lives on that street or there are other residents live on that street? I'm just curious, because it says private way.
It's a private way, I believe.
Is it just him, that's it?
I believe so.
All the power to him, let him have it, if he's by himself, you know, but there's no other resident, all right, you know?
It's a block of one.
It used to be, hey, like I know it was last time, he said he, he appreciated every member, he used to go with the girl across the street, he was like my babysitter at one time, but that's it, we won't talk about the girlfriend, but anyway. No, if he's the only one, what's the big deal?
Good point.
Yeah.
You know, could I suggest maybe, I mean, we could, we could vote on it and then still have Jeff have a conversation with Mr. Nelson and, and see if he's willing to scale it back to, you know, what were you thinking, Greg, were you hoping for nine or 10?
No, I just, I know that Mr. Nelson's not here, so that obviously you can't speak, I can't speak for him, but it was just a question that I had, so I have no, again, I'm in favor of him being able to have this, it's just a question, and since he's not here, I, he can't answer it, so.
Okay.
I will say this, Greg, if you had made a motion that you wanted to amend, that you would approve it with the contingency that Mr. Nelson agrees to end it at 10 o'clock, I would have seconded that motion. So I don't know if that's something that's of interest to you.
Yeah, and again, the only reason I'm hesitating here is I don't want to set a precedent, you know, certainly every situation is unique. Mr. McCoy brings up a great point. If he's the only resident on the, on the street, then, uh...
Well, Mr. Nelson knew that we were talking about this tonight and he's not, so I don't know, he probably assumed that we were just going to say yes. We, we can vote on it and, and do as you suggest, just communicate through the manager to Mr. Nelson that, that there's concerns about the hour and that it being a school night, and hopefully he would respect that.
Maybe let him, the manager, work it out and be happy whatever Jeff and him work out, maybe it'll be 11 o'clock.
And again...
I think you could work with that suggestion.
Absolutely, you know, who am I? I mean, the police obviously have a favorable, so I would, you know, I move that we grant the request.
Okay, so motion's been made, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, and all those in favor? Unanimous, and then I know you, you're writing it down now, but that's with the assistant town manager making a note to kindly ask Jeff to discuss the time. Okay? All right, so that brings us to the end of the agenda, any public comments? Seeing and hearing none, moving on to new business and committee reports, and I will start to my left, please, with Mr. Shampoo.
Okay, yeah, two, two quick things, I think. One, Kendra, I, I guess I was not aware that it was going to be you today, so I would ask you to communicate to Jeff if you could, or with the, with the appropriate parties. A resident came to me over the weekend with a concern about the walk or don't walk sign that is positioned at the intersection of Federal Street and Middlesex Ave, at the top of Federal, that apparently has been not functioning for years, according to this, this resident. I don't know how long specifically, but apparently it hasn't been functioning for quite some time. And it, she's a runner, athlete, and, you know, so she's been aware of it. And as an, as an adult, she kind of navigates that, that crosswalk appropriately, but she witnessed a young person on a bike, not necessarily following the, the rules and the, that, in the absence of that working, she was concerned and felt like the town ought to try to work on fixing that. So that was one indication. Related to that, she also asked if the town has any intent of reproducing or placing a crosswalk from the Federal Street side across to that White House, you know, so going across the street on Middlesex Ave or further up in front of the Arts Council Building, going over to the Congregational Church. And so I, I know those are, that potentially is a complicated question because I, I think that's Route 62 and DOT might be involved more than this, the town, but at a bare minimum, I wanted to see if we could at least fix the, the malfunctioning or not functioning walk, do not walk signs, and I, I pledged to her that I would indicate, that we would communicate with the town about the, the crosswalk. So if, if I could. Lastly, just recently, there's been some dialogue, for lack of a better word, about what I feel is a great asset to our community, and that is our new dog park. And, you know, I was down there for the ribbon cutting and it was, there's such an excitement and a buzz, and I believe that it's a real positive enhancement to our overall community. Unfortunately, it seems like there's a, a portion either of our residents or just people that are using the dog park who aren't observing the sign there that says it's a carry-in and carry-out facility, and unfortunately, they're not cleaning up after their dogs. And I don't, I want to be delicate here about how this goes, but, so, you know, the bags of dog waste are being left behind at the dog park, and, and it's shameful, frankly. And I'm disappointed in any of the folks that are, that are doing that, but I don't know what the solution is. Some solutions have been suggested that, that the town place a barrel there and, you know, once a week, go pick up that barrel, but then the challenge with the barrel is, does the barrel end up becoming a receptacle, receptacle for other waste, not just dog waste? So I don't have a solution to propose, but I feel like we're not, I feel like we're at a point where some solution has to, has to be put in place there. And I'm embarrassed that it, that it's even something we have to talk about, but I think the absence of doing something, it's just going to continue. So either we, we do a communication campaign and re, reinforce the message that it's carry in, carry out, or we look at some way of collecting that refuse and hopefully making it a little less obtrusive and messy. So I wanted to share that observation with my colleagues to see if management is interested or willing to, to do something about that, and I just, that's my two cents. That is all.
Well, I would just want to say to you that I have been having consistent conversations with Jeff since the dog park has been opened, and I've been checking in with him. You know, we, we speak sometimes daily, sometimes at least weekly, all days, all hours of the night, as you know, as, as the previous chair. So we have very specifically been talking about the dog park, and I have asked Jeff, who is not here tonight, to give me his opinion. And it's clear through the work of the Recreation Commission and with DPW and with the town management team, that they are fully supportive of the carry-in, carry-out policy. And I had asked Jeff, you know, how things are going... And I had asked Jeff, you know, how things are going, and he readily admitted that there have been some issues and that Chris Sullivan has been involved as the dog officer and that they've continued to discuss it. There was a resident that reached out to the town that was willing to pay for the barrel, that was willing to see that it would be picked up. The concern is, is that he felt that it wasn't, there hasn't been enough time to work out some of the kinks of the dog park. He was not ready to just jump onto the barrel idea because he didn't think that that was necessarily going to solve the problem. The concern is, is storing waste down there and it overflowing, and if it's not picked up, people, you know, pulling in and putting their coffee cups and other debris in their car and there, that it would be dog waste and other items, and it wouldn't be adequate. And, you know, there's also the other part that it doesn't get at the root of the behavior. Some people, whether there's a barrel there or not, will not pick up their waste. The other thing is, is that there appears that people are picking up their waste, but they just don't want to put it in their car, and as a result of that, they're tossing it over the fence. You know, I've seen the public social media comments, people saying, you know, shut the place down and this and that. I don't think that's the right answer, and I'm not suggesting that anyone here is suggesting that, because there are people that are, you know, doing their part. There are people that are going down and removing five to 10 bags and bringing them home. My concern is those good Samaritans that are doing that are going to lose their patience and stop doing it. So I can't speak for the manager who's not here, but I can tell you that he's continuing to monitor the situation. As many know, Fox News came down and covered the dog park. It must have been a very slow day in the media world with the Olympics going on and everything else for world affairs, that this made headline news. I'm, I, I don't really have the most articulate words to express how I feel about all of that, but let me just say that, you know, I don't, I just leave it at that. But I would just say to you that he is aware of it and is trying to be supportive of DPW and their request to have a carry-in, carry-out. I do think, and I do agree, that we do need to do something. I don't know what that is. The other thing is, is there's been a lot of comments, you know, external from this building, that it's out of towners. I, I don't feel that it's just out of towners. I, I don't think anyone is in a position to be able to say who's doing it and who's not doing it. I will say that when I've gone down there and I've talked to a lot of people, when I've asked them where they're from, just in casual conversation, I have not met anyone that I've spoke to that was a Wilmington resident. They were all out of town people, and they were different towns. So we can do all of the communication internally in Wilmington, but if our audience could be potentially out of towners, I don't know that they're going to get that message, because they're not maybe getting a Wilmington newspaper or on our town website. So I don't think there's any one thing that's going to be a cure-all for this situation, but I agree with you that it is an issue, and I think we have to take some action. I don't know what that is. So I guess I would just say to you that I support, going back through you, Kendra, to Jeff, and maybe you can have some internal discussions as to what, if anything, we can, we can do.
Yeah, we actually, we, we discuss it on a regular basis with the animal control officer. I think it's worth pointing out, this dog park has been phenomenally popular, and it is busy almost every hour of daylight. So if you think about the issues relative to the dog waste as the overall population that's attending it, I bet the percentage is actually pretty low compared to, and we do need some time to work it out. There have been phenomenal people who stepped up from day one and then helped and declined it, and I think there is a lot of effort through social media and otherwise to get the word out. And relative to the Fox report, they, they build the piece as sanitary issues, and when the reporter actually came on to the screen, she was pretty confused as to how to turn it into that story, because reality is, is the signage is there, and it really is working out fairly well, but we are keeping an eye on it on a regular basis. Just to, to a comment about the barrels, and, and this has been something that we've been communicating pretty consistently, a barrel doesn't solve it. There's a reason why there's carry-in, carry-out policies. They've been used throughout the state in a number of public areas. And what it does is typically what they'll find is if you have a barrel, people are more likely to litter than if you don't have a barrel, because the barrel will be overflown, overthrown, or overfilling, or people will just feel like as long as they got it close enough, they did their part. So actually not having waste receptacles in public places reduces the amount of litter that you have. Now, whether or not that's going to work here or not, we're still working it out to see, and it is something that's still being monitored, and I know the town manager is flexible about ensuring that this is the best possible park, and if that needs to be changed, it will be changed. But that's, that's sort of the, the philosophy behind the carry-in, carry-out, is that it in fact does reduce waste. We found that very successfully down at the beach, where there are children with dirty diapers that need to be removed from the beach and, and don't end up in the sand. So it's something I think in a discussion to be continued.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing from me.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I could, I, oh, can I say?
Yep, yep.
Normally I say I'm all set, Madam Chair, on the new business committee reports, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say, I went to national night out, I brought my son Chris to it. What a fantastic time he had. A lot of young kids had a great time. It was wonderful. You saw the Black Hawk. Even I had a fantastic time there, and I really got to thank the police department for putting that on. It was a lot of smiles on a lot of folks, and to see that Black Hawk take off, it's amazing. You don't really ever get to see that, and it was just a fantastic time, and I just wanted to say it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything over here?
Yeah, just as part of the packet, I noticed that we received a, a letter from the Surface of Transportation Board dated August 11th in regards to the Olin Corporation, 51 Eames Street. And I just want to know what, what are we doing? Is legal counsel looking into a response? It has, we have to respond to them by September 9th? Is that...
Legal counsel is involved in that. Town council is in the process of drafting a response to it. I think there's also discussions about reaching out to abutting communities to see if there is any interest or concern on their end to, to lend their voices.
Thank you. And just to reiterate what Mike said, the national night out, I think I saw everybody there. It was a fantastic evening that the police department put on, and congratulations to them. I also, I wasn't able to make the, the thank you from the library, but I ran into Tina Stewart, and that same night, I had a meeting at the, at the library, and she happened to finish, and we ran into each other, and she said it, it went over fantastic, and they had food carts, trucks there, and, and it was a lot of fun, she had mentioned. Also, I want to say thank you to Mike Woods and the DPW. I noticed at the Woburn Street School, the scoreboard sign was cleaned up and fixed up real nice. I know I had mentioned that a while back, and they took care of that. And finally, on August 5th, in our packet, we received something very interesting that according to our town manager, he's not received anything like this in the past, and that is a bequest in the amount of $350,000 to the Board of Trustees of the Wilmington Library from the Barbara A. Johnson Trust. Just an amazing gift to the town of Wilmington. And I, and if a thank you and a, an extended sympathy, she had passed away, I guess she lived in California for 50 years, but was a, grew, grew up in Wilmington, had a sister that worked at the Memorial Library, and never forgot where she grew up, and upon her death, the trust bequested $350,000 to the Wilmington Public Library. So I would think on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, we would extend a thank you and sympathies to the family, just an amazing gift.
That's all I have.
That's all I have.
Thank you. I'd echo those comments, and my thanks to the Johnson family and my sympathies to them. I want to echo my colleagues about their excitement for the national night out. It was unbelievable event, a really great community event, so thanks to the police and fire. And also want to, it's coming up under important dates, but I want to plug the Rotary's Annual Ice Bucket Challenge, Saturday, August 27th at 10:00 a.m. Took on the challenge last year, looking forward to taking on this year. It's a great way to beat the heat, so all the proceeds are going to ALS Research, so that's Saturday, August 27th.
Great. And I do not have anything this evening. Thank you. The one, when is our next meeting? September 12th. Okay. So the, the other, I guess the one thing I would say would be by the time we meet again, the kids will be back in school, so I guess welcome back. It's a little, little early. I'm sure some of you are...
Still got three weeks.
Yeah, exactly. So important dates.
Important dates. So we have, Farmer's Market is still going on through August, October 9th on Sundays, Town Common Parking Lot from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Last day to register to vote in the state primary is August 19th. Town Clerk's Office will be open to 5:00 p.m. for those looking to still register to vote. Also as a reminder, I believe you can register to vote online now, so if you can't make it into the Town Clerk's Office, that deadline still applies, whether you're applying in person to register or online. As Selectman Bendel noted, the Rotary is doing the Ice Bucket Challenge on August 27th, 10:00 a.m. at Rotary Park. Looking for a lot of groups to come out, as people may have been reading in the news, these ice bucket challenges have really led to groundbreaking research from their funding, so it's a wonderful opportunity. Schools open, grades went through 12 on August 30th, so please, everybody, drive the speed limit around school zones. We are closed on Labor Day, September 5th. First day of kindergarten is September 6th. Brush drop-off at Old Main Street will be on September 7th, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The state primary is Thursday, September 8th. Polls open up, open up at 7:00 a.m., and they are open until 8:00 p.m. to vote in those elections, and again, those were state-level elections. Brush drop-off again on September 10th at Old Main Street, 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. On September 10th, the library resumes its Saturday schedule, which is 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The Hardin Tavern is having their open house on September 11th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and the next Board of Selectmen meeting is on September 12th.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn? Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Good night.